If anyone has any comments tonight, be aware that you'll be calling in for your public comment. And the phone number is 810-227-5225. That's 810-227-5225. And you can also email any questions or public comments to infojonoa.org when we get to that portion of the meeting. With that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll start that. It stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much. Okay, everyone make sure they're on muted. All right, with that, we'll go to introductions. At that, I'll ask each member of the zoning board of appeals to introduce themselves. And Patty and Amy as well. I'm Greg Russell, I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Bill, why don't you go next?
Bill Rockwell, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Jean?
Yes, I'm Jean Ledford. I'm a member, the trustee of the Board of Directors, as well as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mary Ann?
Mary Ann McCurry, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals and also a member of the Planning Commission.
Michelle?
Michelle Kreitzberg, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Amy?
Name's Amy Brudig, and I'm the zoning official for Genoa Township.
And Patty?
My name is Patty Thomas, and I am the Recording Secretary for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion for the approval of the agenda. When you make a motion, please state your name. So state your name prior to the motion or the second, so that'll make it easier for Patty.
Ledford moves approval of the agenda.
Mary Ann McCurry, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nobody opposed? Okay, great. That takes us to call to public. This is the general call for public. If there's anybody who wants to have a question for addressing issue not on the agenda, please call in now at 810-227-5225. And you may email at info@genoa.org. And Amy, do we have, I feel like I'm on a telethon. Amy, do we have anybody calling in?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, if we get any calls, we'll address those at that time. With that, we'll leave, we'll close call to the public, but we'll still accept anything that comes in. With that, that takes us to Agenda Item Number One, which is Case Number 2002, a request by Jim and Diane Grant of 5525 King Road for a side setback and variance to construct a detached accessory structure. So, Mrs. Grant, are they present tonight?
Yes, we're here. My husband's right behind me.
I'll let you present your case, and Amy will bring up the diagrams as needed.
And our builder is also here, Jason Holdenauer.
Okay.
We've lived on the property for 36 years. All the buildings on our property were there when we moved in. And unfortunately, the little teeny garage is as cute as can be, but we would like to build a two-car garage with a garage door opener. But we are four feet shy of meeting the 40-foot variance to the neighbor's lane. We are 36 feet from that. Chuck and Karen Noctub are our neighbors, and they did send an email to Amy saying that they are not opposed to that at all. And I do actually, I met a couple of you. Bill Rockwell came to the property. And the cute lady with the glasses and the brown hair, we were in the rain together, so I don't remember her name. Okay, so they've actually seen the property. And then someone drove the property today, but didn't get out to speak to me. They were able to see that we just, we're not moving any forward more near our neighbor's property at all. So I'll let Jason talk more because he can explain it better.
Basically, the side is already where the existing garage is now. So we're actually just moving closer to the house. It'll be 24 by 24, fairly conventional type garage, eight-feet walls, 512 pitch on the roof, the garage door facing King Road.
Okay. I'm going to go around the table and ask any board members if they have any questions before we open call to the public. Bill, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, I believe I've just heard that the proposed variance would be for four feet. Though the paperwork said 10 feet, and I just wanted to make sure I understood what the proper request is.
Four feet? We're 36 feet from the neighbor's property line. I actually have a photo, if I, I don't know if you can see it from my computer or not, but this is actually our yard. And you can see where the electricity line is. That is our neighbor's property.
Yes.
And here's our garage. The garage wall would be exactly the same, it just would come over closer to the house. Whatever, I think it's a 10-feet rule we have to be from the house. So we're not approaching the neighbor at all.
All right, I just was looking at the paperwork that was submitted and the proposed variance, I'm out listed 10 feet. And I'm hearing four feet, and I just wanted to make sure we have the right number down for whatever motions are being made.
We have 236.
Jason wouldn't answer that better than us.
It's been a little while, and we've all got a little rusty here because we turned this in quite some time ago with the delay and everything. Let me run the math here, so we have 236. Let's see, 181.2 plus 24 is 205.2. So 236 minus 205. It comes out to 31, roughly 31 feet. So it's like nine feet. Somewhere between nine and 10 feet.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clarified, thank you.
My understanding is the current building is not in compliance, correct?
Right, but that building was on the property when we bought it 36 years ago.
That might explain why it's just for the 10 feet, because a new building should be brought into compliance.
Correct.
The buildings also behind, they also are on the same line, you know? So everything is pretty much on the same line as it always has been. I don't know if it's the side has changed over the years, or maybe it just wasn't enforced. Hard to say, but the new garage, proposed new garage will be right on the same line as the old single-car garage.
Okay. Bill, any other questions?
No, that was the only one, just wanted to verify the distances.
Jean?
Yes, I'm looking at the drawing, and I see where you put a square for a septic field. Where is the septic tank?
In the front yard. No.
Oh, it's the well.
The well's in the front, the septic tank is on the side.
Is it behind the house or away from the house?
It's away from the house.
On the side.
When we remodeled in 1990, we met all the requirements for the well and septic then at that point.
Yeah, this is a drawing, I modified this drawing from the old addition.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mary Ann?
So Jason, the plot plan that you have here, is that a, where did you get that plot plan? Is that off a survey somewhere?
It was on a file, I think at the township, or possibly Diana had it. And it was from when they did the addition.
So you went off the plot plan that was submitted from an addition?
Yeah, I double-checked the numbers. I couldn't find any pins or anything, but I'm using the numbers from the addition that was done. When was that, Diana, 90s?
90. Tom Slider did it, 1990 in Williamson.
So is that the area that's noted as the proposed addition and deck? Is that what you're referring to?
No, in 1990, we had it on the back end, yeah. So we're making that 10-foot clearance from the addition that's completed.
Okay, so what we have looking at here, it says proposed addition and deck, that's actually already there.
Yeah.
I should have marked that out, but my part is the proposed garage. I just used that drawing and erased the old garage and then put in the proposed garage.
Okay, so when you were running those numbers, Jason, you were looking at the frontage of 236, and then you took away 181.2, which goes to the corner of the garage, proposed garage, right?
Yeah, that is my number calculated, the 181.2 is calculated from basically the 144. I took the 144 measurement to the house, and then I calculated the physical house measurements, came around the front, and then back 10 feet, and over to the new garage.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So your tank is to the side of the house, your septic field is in the back, which would be to the left of this drawing that we have. And any kind of a reserve field would potentially be to the east of that. Do you know where the reserve field is, or?
I do not know where the reserve field is.
Yes.
Okay. So and probably in terms of what Mrs. Ledford was trying to get to also is to make sure that with that proposed garage, you have access to be able to put a reserve field in there should your septic field fail.
We do.
Lots of room to the, yeah, to the east.
But it's a five-and-a-half-acre parcel of property.
Yes, but it would prohibit you from moving your garage back to where your field would need to be.
Correct.
Okay. You have also, also on this plot, it has a woodshed, a chicken coop, and a shed. It doesn't have any, this is old too, right? There's no reference to that.
All of the structures were there when we bought the house.
Okay.
They've all been recited, so they look nice, but they've all were the original ones.
Right. Okay, that's the only comments or questions that I had.
Okay, Mary Ann, and not Mary Ann, Michelle?
Did we confirm then that the space between the garage wall to the right, as I'm looking at this drawing, and the lane is not going any further towards the lane, correct?
Correct.
That is as it stands, and it's even with all that stuff. I just wanted to confirm that, I think it was done earlier, so I'm good with that.
And it was all state.
Yeah. And I believe behind that is a slight dip in the typography, is that correct? Behind the garage that's existing, it slopes down? Okay.
So it would have us challenges, you know, it starts to go downhill behind that garage. So we wanted to keep it closer to the house for that reason also, but also for convenience of, you know, having the garage near the house.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? All right, with that, I'll open the call to the public for Case 2002. Is there anyone out there who wants to make a comment? Call in now. Okay, you don't have any calls or whatever coming in? So this time, I'll close public comment for Case 2002 and bring it back up to the board for member action. Does anyone have any discussion, or do I have a motion coming forward?
Oops.
Question, just to clarify that setback requirement that we're talking about. Is it after Jason spoke, I thought it was nine foot, or is, what have we determined that it's supposed to be?
10.
10?
It's nine, so 10.
Yes, 10 is good.
Okay.
Which is the current wall? It's the current location, basically.
Yes, current location. My paperwork shows for five acres, says 40 to the smaller side, we will be 30.
Okay.
Just under.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, what is the board's desires?
This is Michelle. I would make a motion to approve Case 2002, submitted by James Grant and Diana Worthy of 5525 King Road, granting a side yard setback or variance of 10 feet to construct a 24 by 24 garage. Variance does not, or does provide substantial justice in granting applicant the same rights as similar properties in the neighborhood and is not self-created. Extraordinary circumstances being the location of the home and existing accessory structures on the property, along with the typography and placement of the septic field. Public safety and welfare, granting of these variances would not impair adequate light or air to adjacent properties, would not increase congestion or increase danger of fire or threaten public safety or welfare. Proposed variance would have little or no impact on appropriate development, continued use, or value of adjacent properties and surrounding neighborhood. Our only recommended condition would, that the structure should comply with accessory structure requirements.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. Ledford.
Ledford, second. Is there any further, is there any further discussion?
Discussion in reference to the accessory structure requirements. I had a question regarding accessory structures in the front of country estates. And there is, it appears that there is a wood, there's a woodshed that's at the front of the property. Just want to make sure that that is in compliance with accessory structures for Genoa Township ordinance.
Again, that was there when we moved here 36 years ago. We just wrapped it in aluminum siding. It's a very small building, it houses a golf cart.
I understand, but with respect to granting accessory structures, there is a provision regarding any accessory structures in the front yard. So I just want to make sure that we're still in compliance. Like, we're giving you the variance for the proposed garage, but, and all the other ones are, there's no doubt that those are. But in respect to the other accessory structure that's in the front, I still want to make sure that that's in compliance.
One in the, yeah, I think it's, I think that's only 10 feet away from the property line, so you would want us to.
Not in reference to the property line, in terms of frontage, so.
Front of the house, right. Again, we didn't build it, but if we have to take it down after 36 years, we'd have to take it down. We didn't put it there. And we had no problem getting the approval to do the addition in 1990. But a code is a code.
Just a matter for discussion.
All right, does anyone have any comments or want to address the accessory structure?
Seeing that you had purchased it back in the 30s, I really don't think that we have, that we can change what was going on at that time. To bring it up to date is what I'm saying.
I understand.
I think it should stay as it is.
Yeah, we hope to live on the property for very long, but we'd hate to sell the house to someone down the road, and it'd be a challenge for them. Excuse me.
No, I understand Board Member Ledford's point, so I am in agreement with that. So I will, that was just a discussion point, I'm happy to remove that discussion point.
Noted.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Any other, any other further discussion? Okay, in that case, we'll do a vote. I'm going to do roll call vote for Patty's, Patty's E, so I'll just call out. Bill, yes or no?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's been a long time coming, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, bye, Jason.
Bye, Diana, thanks, everybody.
All right, bye-bye, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, that takes us to Case 2003, a request by Chestnut Development LLC, 6255 Grand River, where variance or allow for a second monument sign on the parcel. Who do we have representing Chestnut tonight?
Hi, this is Brad Ophel, Chestnut Development. What we're proposing is a second sign along Grand River. We are currently building a 16,000-square-foot additional office building behind the current building, which would house up to 10 tenants. And if we were to take and divide the existing sign 10 more times, there really wouldn't be much signage for the, all the tenants in both buildings. Therefore, we're proposing an additional sign. It'll be identical to the existing sign, with the exception of it will be, I believe it's 13 square foot smaller to meet the zoning ordinance of 72 square feet.
Okay, anything else, sir?
That, that is our request.
Okay, I'll go down the world, we'll ask questions before we open the call to the public. Bill?
No, I didn't have any questions based upon what I saw. Go ahead.
Jean?
Well, I tend to disagree with approving this. There is a sign up there right now, I would think that that would be sufficient. Is there some other reason that they're asking for this?
Yes, we could house 10 more tenants in the rear building. We have, one, two, three, four, six, six tenants, including ourselves, in the front building. So that would be dividing that front sign up into 16 different spaces. And they get no signage space along Grand River. They would be probably six-by-eight-inch signs to, you know, promote their business.
How many more people did you say?
10. We have 16,000 square foot that we're building in the rear, a brand-new building.
Any other questions, Jean?
No, that's it, thank you.
Mary Ann?
So, I'm just trying to, what is the hardship here that is, that is related to why the variances is needed? Just.
Our tenants in the rear would have no sign exposure along Grand River. They're behind our current building, and then they're behind the building to the west of us as well.
And this is one parcel, correct?
This is one parcel.
And when the project was approved in 2015, at that point in time, there was a submission, and I'm sure there was a submission for where the sign would go, correct?
Yes.
And did you anticipate that Phase Two was going to have 16 more, how many more did you say?
10, 10 more.
10 more units back there. Did you anticipate that that was going to be something that you would need to address early on with your sign in the front?
I don't believe at that time that was a consideration that, that the signage would shrink down so much that all of the tenants on that parcel would have very little signage on Grand River. I believe, I believe prior to me working for Chestnut Development, this parcel was two separate parcels that were combined. I don't know if that has any influence on what we're requesting, if we were to convert it back to two separate parcels, if, if that would help.
Well, I think it was approved based on the site plan that you had for both phases. So, yeah, in regards to the Board Member Ledford's comment, too, is there's a number of places along Grand River that have a similar setup, where they have a sign in the front and multiple buildings in the back, and have to have a plaque on the wall when they come in there. But if the identification of the business itself, if you're looking for Chestnut, what's the building name? Chestnut?
Landing.
Landing, refer to at least Chestnut Landing for people that are coming in. But the, the ordinance allows for signed postages, as long as they have a public access from the outside for their building. So I'm not akin or in favor of giving a variance based on the fact that there are other properties that have, that have been able to comply with what the ordinance reads.
Okay, any other questions, Mary Ann?
No, thank you.
Michelle?
I'm looking at like definition of a business center in 160201, which states that, obviously, that no matter how many buildings are in on that parcel, they're allowed one sign. I could not find anywhere, maybe someone can help me. There's, regardless of size or number of tenants, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then my only other question was addresses, is there, the address would have to then, for that back parcel would have to be applied to the existing sign?
Can you repeat that question, please?
Is there a, an exception for the addresses of a loan as a separate sign? As, you know what I mean, for the rear building?
Right.
Part of the existing signage?
Take a look.
I was kind of trying to research that, and I couldn't.
You, I'll go back to your previous comment that you made about looking in the ordinance and seeing if there, you know, if there's a number of units, does that kick it up, you know, for signage and everything? They do have an option. Bear with me here for a second, I gotta find it in my ordinance.
While you're looking, can I make another comment?
Sure.
Okay, if I were driving down the street and I'm looking for a business, and it's in Chestnut Landing, if there are two signs out there, and I'm specifically looking for, say, a doctor's office, I pass by the first sign, I don't see his name. I go by the second sign, I do see his name. There's always the possibility that you're going to pass one of those signs, and you're not going to find the person you're looking for. That's, I'm speaking as a regular person looking for an address on a street, driving by.
Yeah, that was my question in regard to address, if it was even address alone, directional per the address, sometimes, I don't know what the stipulations are for that.
Yeah, because then you'd have two signs with the same address.
No, there'll be separate addresses.
Yeah, they would have to have as a separate building, or a business would have a separate address, but.
Well, the drawings show 6253.
That is Building A, that's the front building, 6255 is the rear building.
Oh, I don't have a drawing for that.
Amy?
Yes, sir.
You found what you were looking for?
Yeah, they could do an increase to the existing sign by 10% if they do extensive landscaping and a brick base, which they did. Pull up their permit, the original. Pull up their permit, the original one. Let me see if they already used that.
I believe so.
Did you? Okay.
So that is at the fullest, the size that it can be?
Yes.
Correct. Typically developments like this have a sign, but it's usually the sign of the project. Like if you see, you know, Grand River Annex, or you see Genoa Business Park. That's typically what we see when we have developments like this.
So there, there are no other options?
Not that I could find in our ordinance.
And Amy, as I asked you earlier today, just to get on the record, we have not granted a variance for two signs at any other property in the township, to the best of our knowledge, correct?
Correct, to the best of our knowledge. I even spoke with the assistant township manager, and between the two of us, we could not think of any that had two.
Could I add one more thing?
Sure, Jean.
Okay. If you go further down, or if you further, go further up Grand River toward Art Van Furniture, there's a small mall across the street from it. They have several businesses in there on one sign.
Savannah Retail?
No, it's past Savannah. It's on the same side of the street, but it's, this is like almost across from Art Van. I don't know the name of it. I should have driven by and taken the name, but I didn't.
I believe that's Country Corners.
It's possible. Why not look into something like that? It won't be a monument sign. It would probably be a freestanding.
Are you talking about a pole sign?
Yes.
Those are not, those are prohibited in our ordinance.
Okay, well, that takes care of that one. Okay.
All right. Did everyone crack at questions? Does anyone have any further questions?
Yeah, I guess Bill Rockwell here, just to verify or reiterate a understanding. If they decided to split this property and it was actually two separate properties, then by definition, that sign could be put out there for the two, for the 6255 address, correct? Amy, that's a question for Amy.
I think, I believe, while them combining it was part of their site plan approval to be able to do the two, to be able to do this project. And if they did try to split it, I, they would need setback variances for the building itself.
Okay.
And it would be more cumbersome to split it.
Would, if we downsized the sign, kept it the same design? Changed the square footage a little bit?
I think the issue, Brad, right?
Yes.
I think the issue is, is that it's a second sign, and the current ordinance does not allow a second sign. And showing the hardship for why you're entitled to a second sign becomes a difficulty, because I do view this sort of like as a can of worms. Once you get it, there will be a lot of other people lining up for a similar variant.
Yep. Can you change the name of Chestnut Landing to something else? So that Chestnut Landing could be one, and the other sign could be under a different name.
I think you still have the property problem with the addresses then, Jean.
I guess so. All right.
And actually, the, for both locations, the second sign, unless you're going to change traffic flow, pulling out of there on Sunday, looking to the, I guess that's the east or south. I think there's a visibility issue as well.
We could, we could put, you know, arrows, traffic flow in one and out the other, if that would.
Well, that doesn't solve the problem of why you should get a second sign and nobody else in the township should, should get one. That's the over, that's the overwhelming hurdle I have to come over with.
Now, what if we were to rename the second building instead of Chestnut Landing, Building A, Building B? Say that building gets its own, its own unique name.
Well, that's kind of what I was saying.
They have two separate addresses.
Amy, I don't know if that's for you, if it's under the same, operating under the same parent company, is that?
We look at it, it's still a second ground sign on a piece of property.
Okay.
As long as it's the same parcel.
Right, that's, I'm sorry, I meant to say.
I think that's the issue you have, Brad. So with that, I'll open the call to the public for, for case 2003.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's been brought to my attention that we need to leave the call to the public open longer, because there is a delay. So I would suggest maybe a minute, if we could.
Sure. All right, I'll recall, call the public now, and if any board member has a question, we'll go and wait and see if anybody calls in.
Okay.
Would, Amy, would a scrolling, if you had a scrolling sign at the bottom that would address like the different businesses in the back? You can have that as a certain percentage of the sign. At least there would be something that would scroll with the different businesses on there? Is that an option?
It is not. With our electronic message boards, it's allowed to change four times in an hour.
Okay.
That's, that's another issue that comes up. There's not enough time in the day for everybody to get their fair space on the, the electronic sign as well.
Hey, we have any callers, Amy?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll close. Call to the public for case 2003. And bring it up to the board now.
Mr. Chair, can we make note that a letter, an email was received from the adjacent landowner?
And with no objection to the sign, correct?
Correct. It was sent, sorry, I got it late today, and I sent it to the members in an email.
Yes.
It was by Mr. Mitt, who was the owner of the building next door.
Amy?
Yes, sir.
I have, ma'am. I have that. And also, just for the record, there was one for the first case that an email was sent. And I put that in there also. So they're both in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'll bring it back up to the board for the, for their decision.
This is Mary Ann McCary, speaking regarding the property at 6255 Grand River. Case number 2003, a request for a variance for an additional sign to deny the request based on the following findings of fact. That there is no practical difficulty with respect to granting a second sign. The ordinance is clear in Genoa Township that only one sign monument, or one monument sign can be addressed for each parcel with a specific size. And the current sign that is there has been approved. There are no extraordinary circumstances, and the request for the applicant to have this would have been self-created. The public safety and welfare granting this would, there is no public safety and welfare issue with respect to granting this and the impact of surrounding neighborhood. Now, by denying the, the variance for this, it would actually impact the other residents in the similar sign ordinances that would not be in favor of the variances and the zoning ordinances for Genoa Township.
Um, excuse me, Mary Ann, could you repeat the, the last bullet point, please?
The impact on the surrounding neighborhood, that if granted by denying this request, it would be equal for all other properties that have monument signs and comply with the ordinances or sign ordinances for Genoa Township.
Hey, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Support Ledford.
Motion by Mary Ann, supported by Jean. Do I have further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, and we'll do roll call again for Patty. Bill?
Aye.
Aye?
The motion was to deny, so I am in agreement with the motion to deny.
Jean?
Yes, motion to deny.
Mary Ann?
Motion to deny.
Michelle?
Support motion to deny.
And I also will support the motion to deny, so the variance is not granted. All right, sorry about that, Brad, but I think the two sign thing was a real issue for us.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to case 2004, a request by Daniel and Christine Cassoli, a 4121 homestead for a side waterfront setback variances to construct in addition to an existing home.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. So we are requesting a variance to add an addition on a corner that has a cement pad. It's a 12 by 14 approximately addition that fills in the corner of the property there, and we're requesting two variances. The first is a side variance of 11 inches from the setback of five feet on the north side of the property, and then the second is a variance lakeside. I know our numbers changed after talking with Amy, because she used the two houses on either side, where we originally had used the 500-foot rule and measured, you know, 15 or so houses on each side. So what I was told, she used the two houses, and that changed the variance to about 17 feet lakeside. But it doesn't go past the original property, as you can see on the drawing. There was a variance, I think, on that property when it was renovated in 2004.
It's no closer to the lakefront than the current existing structure.
All right. Remember just questions? Bill?
So just to verify, the side yard setback is now 11 inches instead of a point nine.
They went off of points, so I did the point nine, which does go to 11 inches.
Okay, but it's an 11-inch, right?
Yeah, it was hard to tell on this, like which way they were going with it, so that's why I used the point nine.
All right, and then the waterfront is still supposed to be at a 57 and a quarter, and the variance here is going to still be the 17 and a quarter.
Correct.
Okay.
Jean?
No questions.
Mary Ann?
No questions.
Michelle?
No questions.
Okay, being the case, I'll, I have none either, so we'll open up the public comment for case 2004 for 4121 Homestead, and start the clock now, waiting for those outstanding calls to come in. Okay, that's one minute on my watch. Nobody called in? So, close the public comment for case 2004. Bring it back up to the board for its direction here. Do I have a motion coming?
Mr. Chairman Ledford, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number 20-04 for 4121 Homestead Drive for Daniel and Christine Cassoli for a waterfront setback variance of 17.25 feet from the required 57.25 feet to 40 feet, and a side yard setback variance of point nine feet from the required five feet to 4.1 feet to construct in addition on an existing home with the same waterfront setback as the existing home. With the construction of the addition and side yard setback variance will increase from 4.7 feet to 4.1 feet. Strict compliance with the waterfront and side yard setbacks would prevent the applicant from constructing the proposed addition. The addition in the waterfront yard is not increasing the waterfront setback. Requested variances appear to be the least necessary to divide substantial, to provide substantial justice and necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the property. Extraordinary circumstances of the property is the narrowness of the lot and location of existing home. The waterfront and side yard variance would make the property consistent with other properties in the area. Granting these variances will not impair inadequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the township of Genoa. These proposed variances would not have an impact on the appropriate development, continued use of value of adjacent properties in the surrounding areas. The granting of these variances are conditioned upon the structure being gutted with downspouts. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Report?
A little second.
I got support by Mary Ann and Bill, so any further member discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So it passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, that takes us down to administrative business for the board, approval of the with the January 20th, 2020, or 2020 meeting. That was a long time ago. Hopefully everyone remembered what happened.
What were you, Jean?
Oh, my God.
It was easy.
Okay, this, this is Jean. I'm going to add a word that I think was. What?
Is he married?
Hello? Okay, under new business, item one. The.
I want to celebrate. Drink my misery.
Show me the money, fool.
Show me the money, fool.
What?
No, I don't know what means.
Hold on just one second.
We still have somebody online.
Oh, that was much easier. We did a good job.
Can you mute them, Amy?
Architecture now.
I cannot.
Dana and Dan, can you hear us? Tina and Dan?
I did all of this. I'm a resourceful lady. My pleasure.
Tina and Dan, can you hear us?
Hello? Is there a phone number on their application you can call them?
I'm calling right now.
Oh, hello?
Hi, this is Amy from Genoa. We can still, we can still hear you.
Oh, you can.
It's crazy. All right, well, I'm trying to figure out how to shut down.
I'm gonna stay with keep your clean.
Thank you. Bye. Bye.
Hey. Show me the money, right? All right, so. Okay, moving on. Jean, your comments from, on the minutes.
Yes. Okay, under new business, item one, drop down to the sentence that starts, Board Member Rockwell stated that the reasons for the two vacancies very clear, is that supposed to be, were very clear?
Are.
Are.
The missing word was are.
That's the only correction that I found.
Can you make that, Amy?
Yes, I can do that. Thanks.
The motion, Jean?
Oh, that what? Yes, oh, to approve the minutes with the one correction, yes.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I got a motion in a second. I won't do a roll call for the minutes, because I don't think anyone's going to disapprove, so all in favor signify with saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Great. Correspondents, Amy?
I do not have any. Has been kind of quiet, as you can imagine. We do have two new cases that will be on for the June meeting. So not sure what that's going to hold. We might be holding a Zoom meeting, or we might be doing a public meeting. We're not sure yet.
Okay, I will not be here in June. I can't be here if we do a Zoom. I will be in a lineup, but I don't have a problem zooming in, no pun intended. Zooming in for the meeting, but if we do it in person, I will not be here.
Okay, we do have our alternate, Mr. Fonz, so we'll play it by ear, and then we'll make sure that we're covered.
All right, sounds good. All right, township representative's report.
Can I just report on what we talked about yesterday, because we haven't meetings either? It was a very quick meeting. We approved the consent agenda, which included the payment of bills and the approval of the minutes of April twentieth. The regular agenda. We, we continued on with the assignments of Jill Ricard and Chris Grejek to a three-year term on the planning commission beginning in July, and Michelle to a three-year term on the zoning board beginning in July.
Here. Just kidding.
Welcome, welcome back.
Three years, wait a minute.
Well, okay, and then the township assessor changed the township millage rate as to calculate the twenty twenty winter tax rate from point seven nine three nine to point seven nine three something, and I forgot what that was, but it was a reduction. Slight reduction. And we also revised the per diem policy of the township board members because of the computer system now, where we can access the Michigan Township Association classes and other things that are done on the computer. We have to have the approval of the township board members, which would be the supervisor, the clerk, and the treasurer for them to get paid for the, for the meeting. That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Planning Commission report, Mary Ann?
This is like going back to tax your brain really hard, trying to remember when the last one was, which was in March. So the first item on the agenda was a special use for a, a home to be a sketch plan for a property to be used for work skills. The property, they were coming to us asking to make sure that they could present having a special use for, sorry about this. Sketch camp for a proposed adult foster care. And that was on Coon Lake Road. That special use was approved. And then we had a second item, which was excuse me a minute. For those of you who have dual screens, I, I envy you.
They laughed at my Mac. I can have eighteen things going.
There was a request for especially use for a proposed holistic veterinary clinic on Grand River. And we had a recommendation for special use and an environmental impact in the sketch plan. That motion was approved. And we had a third item for rezoning for a PUD for, from a PRF to an IND, which is a non-residential planned unit development on Parkway Drive with two parcels involving Trinity Health. And that proposal was approved for recommended for approval to the township. Then we had an item for rezoning of of the PUD for an indoor climate storage area located on Grand River and Lawson. And the recommendations for that were sorry. We recommended, it was, the motion was moved by commissioner to recommend the township board the rezoning of the parcel to, from a service to a general commercial and redevelopment overlay. Sorry. With specifics regarding drive-through restaurants being allowed only with a special land use permit, only one gas station, temporary outdoors sales and, and temporary outdoor events that would be subject to zoning ordinance requirements, so this was moved to go to the board for their review. And that was it.
Okay. And you have a fun one next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, looking forward to that, I'm sure. Okay. Zoning official report. Anything else, Amy?
No, sir.
All right, member discussion? Great. Now, make a, take a motion to adjourn, and then I have to sit here for twenty seconds to let it catch up? Is that the deal?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mary make the motion to adjourn, to adjourn.
Got that, Patty? Okay, I'll assume so. She's muted. So.
Sorry, yes, I have it.